Good evening, everyone. We're going to get started. Welcome to the April 2025 Hoboken Board of Education meeting. Thank you all for being here. If you're joining us this evening to speak on agenda or non-agenda items, please use the signup sheets located at the podium. Ms. Sullivan, can you please read the statement of compliance?
Sure. This meeting is being held in conformity to the Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA 10-4-6. Proper public notice of the meeting was published in the local papers on January 14th, 2025, and January 16th, 2025. If any board member or member of the public is in attendance, believes that the meeting is in violation of the Open Public Meetings Act, the Hoboken Board of Education requests that they make a statement at this time. The board wishes to make those in attendance aware that this meeting is being recorded on video and will be broadcast by the board at a later date on CATV Channel 77 and Fios Channel 46. The full meeting recording will also be made available on Board Docs, which can be accessed through the district homepage. The Hoboken Board of Education is committed to preserving the decorum of the public process and is mindful that we live in the electronic age of computers, cell phones, and other electronic communication devices. Nevertheless, we respectfully request that all meeting participants kindly silence their electronic devices during the course of the meeting. And if use of the device is necessary, we ask that you please leave the meeting room if you need to conduct personal business.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Sullivan, can you please call the roll?
Sharon Angley.
Here.
Malani Katamatory.
Here.
Sheila Delara.
Here.
Alex Delatorre.
Antonio Grano.
Here.
Gaitali Khanna.
Here.
Thomas Klupfel.
Here.
Leslie Norwood.
Here.
Aileen McGurk.
Here.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. As usual, we're going to begin the evening with our recognitions, recognizing our March Students of the Month. I will turn the meeting over to Assistant Superintendent Sandra Rodriguez Gomez.
Thank you, President McGurk, and welcome to the student recognition portion of the meeting. We are excited to honor our students tonight and curious to learn about their current accomplishments and those that they will aim for and surely obtain in the near and distant future. I extend a heartfelt greeting to the members of our Board of Education, Superintendent Dr. Johnson, our administrators, faculty, community, students, and of course, their families. It is always such a pleasure to stand before you and introduce our inspiring principals as they come up to the podium and share detailed information and anecdotes about the students being honored here tonight as the Students of the Month for March. We all realize that it is quite an accomplishment to be honored by your school and district community. And if you're one of the students being honored here tonight, please don't ever forget this day and let it inspire many more winning moments. You are role models and peer mentors to the students in your classrooms and to those you pass in the hallway every day. Thank you for inspiring others and continuing to thrive in school and beyond. We are all so very proud of each of you and can't wait to hear about your academic journey. Tonight, we will begin with Vice Principal Ponse of Hoboken High School as their honoree is tutoring other students for the SAT and needs to make her assignment in time. Once Mr. Ponse concludes, he will call Mr. Bartlett from the Brant Elementary School. Mr. Bartlett will then introduce the Connors' Principal, Ms. Addy, and then she will follow this pattern, introducing our next presenters, Principals Shannon and Sorfin of Wallace and Hoboken Middle School respectively. Each will celebrate their school selections and pause for a very important picture opportunity. Again, thank you for your attention and for being with us this evening. And with that, I would ask Vice Principal Ponse to take the podium.
Thank you. Good evening. It is my absolute honor to recognize and celebrate an outstanding individual who truly embodies the spirit of excellence at Hoboken High School. Please join me in congratulating Hannah Morley, our March Student of the Month. Hannah is not just a remarkable student. She's a role model. She approaches every task with dedication, every challenge head-on, and every moment with kindness. Whether she's in the classroom, on the stage, or leading her peers, Hannah consistently demonstrates integrity, intelligence, and initiative. In the classroom, Hannah is a star student. Mr. Tewasker has stated, "She is always open to feedback and uses it as a tool to grow." Her contributions to class discussions are thoughtful and impactful. What truly sets Hannah apart is her remarkable passion for learning. She embraced a rigorous course load, including several AP and pre-AP classes. Ms. Nellens, Hannah's chemistry teacher stated, "Her ability to thrive in such demanding courses is a testament to her determination and her unwavering commitment to personal growth." But Hannah's brilliance doesn't stop in the classroom. She is a cornerstone of Hoboken High School's Theater and Music Department. Whether she is singing, acting, or playing the saxophone, Hannah brings a level of talent and hard work that elevates every performance. Hannah's also made her mark in the world of debate and public speaking. She has participated in Model UN, Model Congress, and Mock Trial, experiences that have sharpened her critical thinking and communication skills. Mr. Huggins said, "As a mock trial lawyer, she not only writes and delivers arguments, but also helps lead her team with clarity and poise." Her leadership doesn't stop there. As treasurer of the AAPI Club, Hannah plays an essential role in planning events and handling responsibilities with a level of maturity and professionalism way beyond her years. Everything she does is thoughtful, precise, and carried out with great care. Throughout her high school career, Hannah has earned consistent recognition of her achievements. She has earned high honor roll every semester since her ninth grade year. She's named the Overall Student of the Month and was also a runner-up in the prestigious New York Times Writing Competition her freshman year. Most recently, she took home first place in the Musical Theater Ensemble category at the Speech and Theater Association Competition, a well-deserved recognition of her artistic excellence. Ms. Taggs stated, "Hannah is the kind of student every teacher dreams of, every peer respects, and every community is proud to have. She is truly destined for greatness." Hannah, thank you for all you bring to Hoboken High School. We are incredibly proud of you and can't wait to see all the amazing things you accomplish next. Congratulations on being named Hoboken High School's March Student of the Month. You absolutely deserve it. And at this time, I would like to call Mr. Bartlett, Brant School Elementary Principal.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, members of the board, Dr. Johnson, Assistant Superintendent, Mrs. Rodriguez Gomez, and our guest tonight. At this time, I would like to ask Veer Kapoor to come join me at the podium. Congratulations to Veer Kapoor, our Brant School Student of the Month for March. Veer was nominated by his second-grade teacher, Mrs. Spano. Mrs. Spano said, "Veer understands the feelings of others. He treats everyone with respect and care. He offers support to classmates, whether academically or socially and emotionally. He listens to others without judgment and with full attention. Veer motivates his peers, and he celebrates them. He remains calm and understanding even in difficult situations. He welcomes and includes others. Veer appreciates diversity in backgrounds, opinions, and abilities, and is always willing to learn and participate in class with a smile." As principal, let me just say that Veer is an example of how we all should be. He is kind and never judges. He starts his day with a smile and leads others throughout the day with his kindness. Mrs. Spano went on to say that Veer is an absolute joy to be around. His presence makes everyone smile. He makes funny jokes and knows how to make people laugh. He loves to contribute to a peaceful and safe environment. He makes unique contributions and is dedicated to his academic growth. His enthusiasm for learning and commitment to leading a positive school community is so very palpable. His willingness to help others and inspire his peers is admirable, and his drive to succeed and his ability to collaborate effectively makes him a valuable part of the school, enhancing both its academic and social environment. Prior to being honored here tonight, Veer was the Classroom Spelling Bee winner, and he also won the Music Award, Great Work Achievement Award, Physical Education Award, and World Language Award at our most recent academic pep rally. His favorite subject is family because he loves to dance with them. Veer loves to play basketball and wants to be a professional basketball player when he grows up. When told he would be honored here tonight, Veer said, "Brant School is a good school. I really like my school." Give me a high five on that. Give me a fist bump on that. I am very kind, and that's why I am Student of the Month. Veer, if we could bottle up your kindness and sell it, we'd all be millionaires. Please join me in congratulating our Brant School Student of the Month for March, Veer Kapoor. At this time, I'd like to welcome to the podium Principal Addy from Thomas G. Connors Elementary School.
At this time, I'd like to call up Kylie Olivier, the Connors' Student of the Month. Good evening. Tonight, I have the absolute joy of recognizing our Student of the Month, Kylie Olivier, from Ms. Hall's third-grade homeroom class. Kylie, we are so proud of you for earning this special recognition. What makes Kylie truly special? Ms. Hall describes her as someone who brings a positive, loving attitude to school every single day. Her tremendous effort in everything she does and her incredibly kind heart shine through in all her interactions. When asked about her favorite subject, Kylie had to think hard because she loves learning so much. Eventually, she chose social studies because she enjoys reading about people and different cultures around the world. She's constantly reading biographies and even quizzes her teachers on fun facts. Some of her favorite people to research include Rosa Parks, Maya Angelou, and Zendaya. Kylie especially looks forward to Women's History Month and Black History Month. In fact, for Women's History Month, she chose to write about someone very special, her mom, who she describes as the most incredible person and the best mom in the world. Her classmates adore her too. Janely shared, "Kylie is a very good student who pays attention and is very nice in class. If somebody doesn't have what they need, she will give them what they need." Ms. Indatari, Kylie's math teacher, tells us, "Kylie has a fantastic love of learning. She's eager to practice new skills and always does her best. She often seeks challenges once she's mastered something new, and she's quick to help her peers when they're stuck." Kylie is truly a great role model. Ms. Hall shared that when Kylie found out about this honor, she was surprised. She thinks she earned it by being a good role model and friend and by always giving hugs to those who need them. Her classmates were thrilled for her, especially her good friend Josie, who said, "Kylie definitely deserves it because she's been a very good friend. She does really well in class, is very thoughtful, and very kind." Ms. Courtney, Kylie's ELA teacher, shared that Kylie has shown exceptional growth in reading and writing. She consistently demonstrates strong comprehension skills, participates enthusiastically in class discussions, and is always eager to share her writing ideas. Her dedication recently showed when she scored 100% on her novel comprehension reading check. When Kylie grows up, she wants to be a teacher because she loves learning so much. She said, "When I am a teacher, I can show my students everything I learned in school. Maybe I can work here because Ms. Hall and all of my teachers inspire me." Well, Kylie, the truth is that you inspire us. Kylie embodies everything we value in a Connors' koala: trustworthiness, care, good citizenship, responsibility, and respect. Please join me in congratulating our extraordinary Student of the Month, Kylie Olivier. Keep shining bright, Kylie. We know you can be anything you want to be. At this time, I'd like to call out Mr. Martin Shannon, the Principal of Wallace Elementary School.
Good evening. We are here tonight to celebrate Isabel Zakansky for receiving Student of the Month for her exceptional academic dedication and outstanding social behavior. Isabel's passion for learning, curiosity, and perseverance shine through in everything she does. She eagerly participates in class discussions, supports her peers, and serves as a positive role model in her classroom. Her kindness and empathy create a warm and welcoming environment for everyone around her. A reliable and dedicated student, Isabel often assists the teacher with classroom tasks and encourages her classmates in all subjects. Her caring nature and strong friendships have made her a beloved member of the school community. Exceling in both math and Spanish, Isabel approaches challenges with determination and enthusiasm. Her love for reading is evident when she confidently reads aloud, bringing stories to life for her peers. Isabel's contagious enthusiasm for learning inspires her classmates to stay engaged and motivated. She celebrates others' successes, offers support during difficulties, and fosters a spirit of kindness and encouragement. Beyond the classroom, she actively participates in school activities, making Wallace Elementary a brighter place. In her free time, Isabel enjoys drawing, reading stories, dancing ballet, and spending time with her family. Her favorite subjects are ELA, where she loves creating stories, and math, which she enjoys for its problem-solving challenges. Ms. Yapez had this to say of Isabel: "Isabel's kindness and patience make her a joy to have in class. She truly makes our school a better place and enriches my teaching experience." Mr. DiBenedetto also added, "Isabel is a fantastic listener and an outstanding science student. Her curiosity and enthusiasm make her a joy to have in class." Congratulations, Isabel. Keep shining and inspiring those around you. Let's hear it for Isabel, our Wallace School Student of the Month. At this time, I'd like to welcome Principal Sorfin of the Hoboken Middle School.
Good evening, everyone. Please welcome to the podium Hoboken Middle School Student of the Month for March, Stefan Jovanowski. Stefan was nominated by his ELA teacher, Ms. Nodine. Ms. Nodine described Stefan as an outstanding student in ELA. His dedication to both classwork and homework demonstrates his commitment to academic excellence. When he shares his thoughts in class, it's evident that he has reflected deeply on the topic. Beyond academics, Stefan shines in the theater, balancing his studies with his passion for the performing arts. Most importantly, he is a role model of kindness and respect, greeting everyone with a warm good afternoon as he enters the room. Mr. Schultz shares that it's been a pleasure getting to know Stefan in pre-AP world history. Stefan's positive attitude is contagious. He always walks into class with a smile and cheerful, "Good morning." He asks insightful questions and takes the initiative to follow up on his work, ensuring he continues to grow as a student. His responsibility and determination are especially inspiring. Ms. Liv highlights Stefan's dedication to the music department. As a strong leader in chorus, he goes above and beyond to improve his musical skills. His devotion is unmatched, his devotion is unmatched, volunteering at every fundraiser, performance, and opportunity to support the music program. Despite juggling work, theater, and music, he has managed to earn a lead role in this year's district show, Newsies. Stefan not only excels as a performer, but also as a supportive peer, always looking out for his fellow students and making his teachers' lives easier with a kindness and enthusiasm. Mr. Benson recognizes Stefan as a true asset to the Hoboken Middle School Theater Program. His talent and hard work have earned him a special honor, which I'm going to announce to you and everyone else for the first time tonight. Stefan has just been nominated for the Foxy Award for Outstanding Performance by a middle-school actor. He's just been nominated for the Foxy Award for Outstanding Performance by a middle-school actor for his portrayal of the Queen of Hearts in Alice in Wonderland, this year's middle-school production. So, that's a huge honor. Congratulations to him. Beyond his performances, Stefan is kind, helpful, and reliable. Watching him grow as both a person and a performer has been an absolute joy. Beyond his teacher's praise, Stefan's peers also admire him. Meila and Annie both shared that Stefan is someone who is always there. He is fun to be around and always brings a positive energy to those around him. They also shared that Stefan is hardworking and always focused on his goals. As for Stefan himself, he was excited to learn that he had been named Student of the Month. Stefan shares that he has found a home in the theater and music programs at Hoboken Middle School, something he didn't have at his previous school. In addition to his involvement in junior thespians and chorus, he enjoys watching TV, movies, and of course, theater. While he's not yet sure what the future holds, he's excited to take his next steps at Hoboken High School this fall. Stefan, we are so very proud of you, not just for your achievements, but for the way you carry yourself each day. You bring a sense of self wherever you go, and Hoboken Middle School is a better place because of it. I am excited that you are attending Hoboken High School, and I really look forward to seeing you light up the stage as a Red Wing. Please join me in celebrating our Student of the Month for March, Stefan Jovanowski.
Congratulations to all our students who were recognized tonight. We are so very proud of you and keep up the great work through the end of the year and as you continue your academic careers. Now, we are going to hear from our student representative from Hoboken High School, Ms. Jenna Siriyo.
Good evening. My name is Jenna Siriyo. I am the Hoboken High School Student Government Representative, and thank you for having me this evening. March 3rd through March 5th, students from Hoboken High School participated in Read Across America, reading children's books to students of Brant, Wallace, and Connors. Recently, on March 18th, a member from the Charity Quest team visited members of the National Honor Society, discussing a contest in which the volunteer groups who can log the most hours will win a prize of $1,000. March 21st, Hoboken High School celebrated our honor roll ceremony, honoring students with high academic and athletic achievements from marking periods 1 and 2. March 31st to April 4th, the Student Government Best Buddies and Heart of Hoboken held Jelly Bean Guessing Competition. All proceeds benefited Ms. Sevo and Ms. Alt's memory book. April 7th, the Student Government held our annual blood drive in the gymnasium, sponsored by our Health and Wellness Committee. Together, we were able to get 47 pints of blood donated. Thank you to board member Paz Delatorre for passing by and supporting the blood donated. On to clubs. The Math Club held its last competition on March 18th. Our Spring Sports Jam was hosted by Best Buddies and Heart of Hoboken on April 3rd from 6:00 to 7:30 p.m. Thank you for all of those who attended. And finally, for sports, there are so many sports accomplishments thus far for the spring season. We'd like to highlight the Girls' Flag Football Team for having its first game in program history this past week. The girls secured a 6-0 victory over Union City High School. Thank you so much for this opportunity to speak, and we look forward to seeing you at our events. And as always, go Red Wings!
Thank you so much, Jenna. There's always so much exciting stuff happening at Hoboken High School, and we appreciate you taking the time to keep us all in the loop because, good Lord, it certainly is a lot. Dr. Johnson, do you have a superintendent's report this evening?
I do. I have a brief superintendent's report. Good evening. So, we are entering the spring season with so many exciting things happening across the district. We actually have a group of over 50 students and staff members participating in our Classroom Without Walls program at Hoboken High School. They just landed in South Africa early this morning, ready and eager to embark on an educational journey. So, we were happy about that. I received some videos and some pictures this morning. So, it was really exciting to see. And they seem to be happy and a little tired, but excited about being there. Yesterday, we had a team from Brant Elementary School who attended the New Jersey Department of Education's Promising Practices statewide conference at Rutgers University. They were selected as a New Jersey Promising Practices district or school, and they presented on the Individualized Learning Pathways period. And it was really exciting to see because we had the principal and two teachers, you know, get up in a large setting of over, I think, 40 districts and present out a best-practice model for flexible grouping and explaining why some of their practices related to mathematics instruction resulted in some really good student achievement, especially after the pandemic. And I was very proud to see our teachers and our principal, Mr. Bartlett, just in front of a group of stellar educators from across the state. It was just really wonderful to see. And what was great about it was, after the conference, Rutgers did a really great job setting the conference up and coming back and having an extremely robust conversation with our Assistant Superintendent, Ms. Rodriguez Gomez, this morning about how we could actually replicate the concept of Promising Practices in the district and this concept of a fishbowl lab-type concept of inviting other districts from across the state to the Hoboken School District next year, possibly once a marking period, to present out some of these Promising Practices next year for really dynamic professional development across the district. So, I'm excited about that. Also, happy to report out that our athletic teams are off to a really good start, not only at the high school, but also at Hoboken Middle School. For those of you who don't know, we started a full middle-school athletics program. So, our spring sports are really off to a great start. But something that most people might not know, we have an all-new Hoboken High School Girls' Flag Football Team, and they've played two games so far this year. They're 1-1. And we have one of our flag football players sitting in the audience right now. And so, it's been really exciting, and we can't wait to see how we do the rest of the season. And next year, Girls' Flag Football will actually be an NJSIAA sport. So, it's really an exciting thing to see girls' athletics expanding across the state and within the NJSIAA. But not only athletics, also our Fine and Performing Arts program across the district is really growing and expanding. I want to let you know a few important dates that are coming up and things that are happening across the district. This week, we're engaged at the high school level in the Teen Arts Festival. And as you know, our district musical, Newsies, is going to be taking place soon, May 16th through the 18th. So, mark your calendars. And the middle-school and high-school spring concerts are also coming up. And the middle school and high school spring concerts are also coming up at the end of May and in June, so I'll remind you of those dates. But the middle and high school concert is on May 28th, and the elementary concert is on June 4th, so that's something we want to make sure that we don't miss. The high school music program and the middle school music program are also going to be competing in a Music in the Park statewide competition. This is something that's really great for our program, because this is a competition that the choruses and our strings ensembles and bands actually have the opportunity to compete in, and they're adjudicated at both the middle school and the high school level, so the kids really look forward to going to this competition on both days. But one other thing that we're really excited about, this is the first time, the city's cultural affairs or cultural arts program has invited all five of our schools' choruses and small instrumental groups to perform a concert at the shipyard on the water on June 9th. This is going to be a one-hour concert at no cost to the community, so mark your calendars for that. I'll also remind you in May about this, and also at our meeting in June. The kids are already starting to prepare for this, so it's a concert on the waterfront. And like I said, we've had opportunities where our kids have performed on the waterfront, but this is the first time that all five of our schools in one night will be performing, you know, on the water, so it should be a really fun night. And lastly, our high school theater department will be heading to the University of Indiana to participate and compete in the International Thespians Festival from June 23rd to the 27th. So, we have our athletics department that's off to all kinds of competitions and games, and our theater arts and our music department is as well. Over the past month, we've also been preparing for a range of summer offerings in the district. This summer, we're going to be running our ESY program, which is something that we do every summer. We are also going to be operating our YWCA Summer Camp Program along with our Bridge Camp Program for four-year-olds who are rising to the kindergarten level. But in addition, we're also going to be running a splash into literacy and splash into math program for students in grades one through eight. We will be running a summer algebra readiness program at the high school, and we're also going to be running our traditional high school summer school program. But this year, our summer programs are actually going to be ending at the end of July, like the last day of July. Usually, we kind of run over a little bit into August, but this year, we're going to make sure we end right at the end of July, giving our custodial crews enough time to ensure that they have time to clean and organize and get everything ready in our buildings. This also gives the opportunity for the city's recreation department to get into the high school and utilize the pool and set up any kind of recreation-type learn-to-swim or open swim programs in the pool throughout the month of August. So, instead of trying to squeeze some things in at nighttime throughout just the month of July, they'll actually have the entire month of August to run whatever kind of programs they want. So, I have met with the recreation department personnel already and let them know this to give them ample time to plan for any kind of summer program programming that they wish to have. And finally, I'm proud to announce that we're just about finished with the college and university application season, and while you're going to hear a whole lot more about this from now until the end of the school year, tonight, I'd like to report that our 158 seniors have been accepted to 156 four- and two-year colleges and universities, not only in the United States, but in four other countries as well. And in addition to that, I'm very proud to announce that they have earned over $20.1 million in college and university academic scholarships to attend these colleges and universities. This is all merit-based scholarship money, so this is the highest amount that they have received in the past 10 years plus. So, I'm really proud of the kids, and you'll hear a whole lot more about it between now and the end of the school year. So, that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson. We'll now move into committee reports. Oh, yes. And for any of you here with young children, if you would like to leave, it is okay. We will not be offended, because it's important to get home for bedtime and schoolwork and all that sort of good stuff. How was the flight?
Long. She said, yeah, thank you. She didn't sit very well. But, uh... God. Oh, no. Thank you. But, uh, they got there, they ate, and then they went back to sleep. 14 hours. So, they left last night at 9:30. About 11:45. Part-time. It was 5:45 there. Huh? Uh-oh. Phone and a bag. I was with shit all the stuff and negotiations. I find, like, Joe Don't DZ now or something. She did it. It's gonna be crazy. It's gonna be so... I'm not that way. I have a disaster to proceed. I will fix it.
All right. We are now going to go into committee reports. Ms. Sullivan, do you have a business administrator's report this evening?
Just an update on the budget. Budget that was approved by the board at the last meeting was submitted to the county, and the county superintendent has approved that, so we will go ahead and advertise on April 30th, and then we'll have the public hearing on May 6th.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. We'll now turn to Ms. Norwood and curriculum.
Thank you. The curriculum committee met on Thursday, April 3rd. In attendance were Dr. Johnson, Ms. Sandra Rodriguez Gomez, Ms. Angley, Ms. Katamatory, Ms. Kana, and myself. There are four curriculum items on the agenda, and the committee recommends all for approval. 9.01 is the approval of a Hoboken Middle School Assembly, and it's an academic game show-type style event. 9.02 is acceptance of a Project Leadaway Computer Science Expansion Award in the amount of $10,000. 9.03 is the approval of a variety of field trips, and 9.04 is the approval of off-site PTO events. The family math night originally scheduled for April 5th was rescheduled to Saturday, May 3rd from 3:00 to 7:00 at the high school. We look forward to many families being in attendance. There's a number of teacher professional development items, including 13 participants across the district continue to participate in Google Educator Certification Programming. The district reading specialists are currently engaged in dyslexia screenings. 129 K-8 students district-wide have been identified for screenings based on their DRA scores or their Lincoln scores, and those students, if flagged, may be referred to intervention and referral services or potentially the child study team. Kindergarten teachers are engaged in integrating financial literacy into the social studies committee and curriculum. Lincoln C. Administration is being held starting yesterday through April 11. The Spanish Dual Language Program will have its lottery for seats on April 9, which is tomorrow. And finally, cursive writing instruction is returning to the curriculum in school year 25-26 for grades two through eight. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Norwood. And I will say, when I mentioned cursive in my home, it was meant met with a giant groan. I think it's a fabulous idea. We will now turn to facilities and Mr. Granja.
Thank you, Ms. McGurk. Good evening, everyone. This is a report on the Facilities Committee meeting that happened on April 3rd of this year. In attendance were Ms. Delara, Dr. Johnson, Mr. Caligie, Ms. Angley, Mr. Klupfel, and myself. On the consent agenda, 1301 is the approval of fire and safety drill reports. These have been reviewed at administrative and a board level. We submit them to you for approval. 1302 is the approval of facilities requests. A few details here, because questions have been asked. The committee sends you all a detailed information about the use requests. The one thing to note is that we do have a request process, so all of those requests that come through, they go through the administration, they end with Mr. Caligie, they're presented to the board. The board then reviews and approves. The priority will always be towards facilities used by the Hoboken School District. We do have a couple of umbrella organizations, which are the PTOs. So, one of the things that we've discussed here is that, from a liability perspective, our carrier will no longer cover unless we consider our PTOs as umbrella events. But all other events, when they go through this approval process, have to have official sponsors and proof of insurance coverage. So, there are events that have not been approved, and this is not for any lack of desire or intent for these activities to happen, but they lack a formal sponsor and they lack insurance and liability, which our district cannot cover. So, I would like to make a note for just for the record, which we are now required to, that their Hawala School PTO and the middle school PTO have been approved for three different events per this agenda, and we recommend 1302 for your approval. Couple other quick updates at the high school. The boiler replacement is underway. The weather is cooperating with us, and we should be able to continue the work and hopefully progress, make significant progress during the break. And second is the locker room replacement at stadium. The lockers will be shipping on March 22nd. Installation will occur promptly. That is my update. Thank you, Ms. McGurk. Back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Granja. We'll now turn it over to Mr. Klupfel for finance.
Thank you. The committee met on April 4th. With me were Mr. Delatorre, Mr. Granja, Ms. McGurk, Dr. Johnson, Ms. Sullivan, and Ms. Lopez. The board, the committee did the review of all agenda items and recommend all for approval. I just want to point out a couple of things. 1110 is the approval of a revised food services contract. We approved it at the last meeting. This one, upon review, removes a certain item and is, will cost about $10,000 less. So, this new contract replaces the previous. The handful of items appoint our interim business administrator, Ms. Sullivan, as sort of formally appoints her as a board secretary of public agency, compliance officer, and qualified purchasing agent, all vital roles in her office. And finally, 1116, I have to acknowledge the $84,500 donation from the Hoboken Public Education Foundation for some supplies at the high school family math night and math gymnasium program. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Klupfel. Ms. Katamatory, do you have a governance report for us this evening?
Yes, I do. Thank you. Governance Committee met on Thursday, April 3rd. In attendance were Dr. Johnson, Ms. Norwood, Ms. McGurk, Mr. Klupfel, and myself. Committee discussed the agenda and recommends all agenda items for approval. This month's agenda contains approvals for typical items, including appointments, resignations, leave requests, modifications, compensation, and stipend approvals, as well as approvals for volunteers for various events and programs, workshop approvals, approvals of walking tours, and the appointment of substitutes. There are a few items and one correction that I'd like to highlight on the agenda tonight. 10.14 is the approval of qualitative merit goals for Danielle Miller in connection with the creation of a coaching orientation program that was very successful. 10.17 and 10.18 cover the annual appointment of certificated administrators and staff for the 25-26 school year. 10.19 requests approval of the proposed calendar for the 25-26 school year. Note that this proposed calendar includes an early spring grade, which mirrors the calendar for the current school year and ends the day before Juneteenth to avoid coming back to school on the following Monday, June 22nd. Subject, of course, to whether, you know, we need to make up snow days or any other unavoidable closure days. 10.21 approves a sidebar agreement to the current collective bargaining agreement between the board and the HEA, covering the addition of the positions of various coaching positions in connection with the growth of our sports program offerings at the middle school level. 10.22, which currently says it's between the board and the HEA, should actually say it's between the Hoboken Board of Education and the Hoboken School Employees Association. And that sidebar agreement cover approves a sidebar agreement between the board and the HSEA regarding the operation of a program to recruit, train, and compensate cohorts of our paraprofessionals as registered behavior technicians annually, and will replace the previously agreed-upon ABA differential in the existing agreement between the board and the HSEA. And, oh, one more, a couple more things. 10.23 covers the monthly HIB report for each of the schools in the district. You'll note there is one confirmed report at the high school level, and I would like to make clear that this incident was actually a complaint made against Madison High School on behalf of our Hoboken High School, on behalf of the Hoboken High School, for incidents that occurred immediately following the Section 2, Group 2 varsity basketball finals on March 8th, which reportedly included the use of racist slurs and other insults directed towards our players as they left Madison High School, as well as social media posts aimed at our students by what are believed to be Madison students, which were also very racially charged. These types of posts and behavior are strongly condemned by the board. Some of these posts were screenshot, and an HIB incident confirmed. As an aside, the district has requested that the Madison Player School Superintendent apologize to our students and high school, and we have thus far, even as of today, heard nothing from the Madison School District whatsoever regarding these incidents. Lastly, you'll see a policy under Item 701. It's the approval of District Policy Number 5111A, covering access to education, student privacy, and immigration enforcement, which is on for a second reading tonight. And that is my report.
Thank you, Ms. Katamatory. We'll now turn it over to Ms. Delara for wellness.
Thank you. The Wellness Committee met on Wednesday, April 2nd. In attendance were Dr. Johnson, Ms. McGurk, Mr. Delatorre, and myself. As previously mentioned, on Monday, April 7th, the Hoboken High School held a blood drive during normal school hours. On May 1st, the school-based Youth Services will hold its first-ever mental health event at Tagliary Football Field. It will be set up just like an outdoor expo with tents in the turf area, different vendors from around Hoboken and Hudson County with a focus on physical and mental health, as well as aspects of the student's life. There'll be about 25 different agencies there with nutrition, family therapy services, and more. There will be also food and drink vendors for our students to sample, and our students will visit this event during their regular school hours of lunch and gym. We were also informed that an interest survey was sent out to our middle school sixth and seventh grade families, which will be next year, seventh and eighth grade. The form was just to kind of gauge the number of students interested in... As previously mentioned, on Monday, April 7, the Hoboken High School held a drive during normal school hours. On May 1, the school-based youth services will hold its first-ever mental health event at Tagliary Football Field. It will be set up just like an outdoor expo with tents in the turf area, different vendors from around Hoboken and Hudson County with a focus on physical and mental health, as well as aspects of the student's life. There'll be about 25 different agencies there with nutrition, family therapy services, and more. There will be also food and drink vendors for our students to sample, and our students will visit this event during their regular school hours of lunch and gym. We were also informed that an interest survey was sent out to our middle school, 6th and 7th grade families, which will be next year, 7th and 8th grade. The form was just to kind of gauge the number of students interested in our sports for the fall. The results came back, and they're pretty high, which means that our 7th and 8th grade upcoming students are very interested in all of the sports that our middle school has to offer. Based on these numbers, Dr. Johnson determined and let the committee know that we will keep a similar structure to what we've been having for the last year or so, where 7th and 8th grade will participate, and we'll have 6th grade students participate in clinics. Further discussion was had about clinics being held during the week versus the weekends, and just making sure that the club enrollment at HMS, the numbers of those don't dip when the students are participating in sports. Dr. Johnson agreed that this is something that she needs to look at, and perhaps an overhaul of the clubs for next year. And lastly, I'm happy to inform that the district has its first therapy dog. His name is Georgie. He finished all of his coursework. He is now a certified therapy dog. Georgie took part in six months, was in classes. Georgie's going to start at the high school with our older students, the life skills and transition students. He'll also make some visits to our elementary and our middle schools, and the district's goal is to have a therapy dog per school. So happy to end on that note. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Delara, and thank you to everyone for their very robust committee reports this evening. It leaves me crossing out sections of my president's report, and I'm totally okay with that. First off, I'd like to welcome our interim business administrator, Ms. Sullivan, to her first Hoboken board meeting. We're very glad to have you here, and we hope you find this a great place to serve as an interim BA. It's really hard to believe that we've hit the end of the third marking period, and we're sitting here on the cusp of spring break. And as Dr. Johnson mentioned, it's a very exciting time with college acceptances, scholarship talk, spring sports. And if you're not following the district on social media and you need a mood lift, I know when I sit down to take a look in the evening and I see all the various teams winning what seems like everything, I realize they do lose some things now and again, it just makes me personally so proud of all the hard work that's going into all of these sports and activities that Hoboken Public School District students are involved with. As Dr. Johnson mentioned, rehearsals are in full swing for newsies, and if you do not have your tickets, I would strongly advise getting them soon. They are going very, very quickly, and this seems to be a musical that people throughout Hoboken are really excited about being able to see put on here locally. As Ms. Sullivan mentioned, the budget has been approved by the county office, and we will be having our public budget hearing here on May 6 at 7:00 p.m., right here in the Demarest Auditorium. We invite the entire Hoboken community to come and join us to learn more about the budget for the 2025-2026 school year. And finally, on the topic of our strategic planning process, which we are working through, a community survey will be released on behalf of the Board of Education tomorrow. It's rather similar to what had gone out to parents, and this is in support of our new five-year strategic plan. This survey is an opportunity for the broader Hoboken community to share with us their thoughts, their dreams, their visions, and everything they would like to see in the Hoboken Public School District. And with that, I will conclude my president's report, and I hope that everyone has a very safe spring break, and that our high school students have a wonderful time in South Africa and make it back to us safely. We will now go into public comments on agenda items. Do we have speakers signed up?
One person. Patricia Waiters.
As a reminder, before we open for public comments, over the years and most recently, the board has been asked why it does not prohibit or stop comments about school district employees from individuals who speak during public comment portion of our meetings. The short answer is that the law prevents the board from censoring comments made about district personnel. The board does not condone, nor is it a party to, comments as such. However, just because the speaker may have the right to say what he or she feels, it does not absolve the speaker from any liability for comments that could be viewed as defamatory by an employee. Should speakers say something that subjects them to a civil suit, the responsibility falls squarely on the speaker and not on the board. Board policy requires that all speakers please state your name, municipality of residence, and business affiliation, if any. Speakers are allowed five minutes, and Vice President Angley will quietly motion when there are 30 seconds left. Please address all comments to the chair. Board policy states that the board welcomes comments on matters of interest to the board, but this is not an opportunity for dialogue or debate between speakers and board members or the superintendent. Good evening, Ms. Waiters.
Thank you, Patricia Waiters. Is that what you just said, that long speech would be helpful if you had a public audience? So nobody's here but us. I'm glad people watch. First of all, two minutes before Madam President came, I asked you about a rights notice, Council. So when she said in her statement about me being an employee, I'm speaking today as an employee slash resident slash mom slash Hoboken taxpayer, okay? So I just wanted to clarify that, because I want this placed on the record. In this agenda, I'm speaking on agenda items, Madam President. And it's so funny that the facilities director, Mr. Grania, this is part of the agenda. Y'all public reports, right? Your reports is part of the agenda. Okay. So approval of the facilities can, they clarify it when I finish. I'm just putting this on the record so you can answer later. With the approval of the facilities, it's a cause. You said it was a cause. If it's not for school purposes or whatever. Back in 2022, 2023, I was the union president, and the facility was used for the NJEA. According to them, with the permission of Tim Callagie, said that they could use the facility. So I guess that don't include them. You can rectify later with respect to the public using the facilities, because the incident escalated this huge. And you mentioned liability, and whoever allowed them to use that facility should be held liable. That's my opinion. And NJ, the Hoboken Board of Education Foundation, this is a lot of money here. Everybody know that Mr., he's not here today, Torre, sits on that committee, president of the committee, whatever it is. I think that's the hugest conflict of interest. When I see these numbers, I've been saying this for two years. Every time I run against you guys, this kind of money here need to be justified to members of the public, because it look like simply pay to play. This is a lot of money. I hope you agree, Mr. Finance, or Clumpford, because you mentioned that about this money. Now, all approval of the appointments for, I see you guys are working wonderful now with the NJEA. When I was the president, never, none of you guys wanted to work with me, didn't provide the resources I need. Instead, a hit was put out on me to remove me and replace me. This is very disturbing seeing 10-17, 10-18, 10-21, and whatever else the Chair of this committee mentioned on this agenda. It's like a smack in my face in the audience, which I don't care. I'm just saying everything tonight to place it on the record, because it will be brought to justice. Okay? So that brings me back to my report that I want to put, because it's in, is in the same category with this. I have an affirmative action report about the incident that happened with me in the union, and all of these items you mentioned tonight with the union. I want to see the Board of Education's contract, okay? I want to see the bargaining agreements and how you working with this new young lady, which was a false election. You working with this new young lady, which I have a statement from where they lied on me to have me removed, but you working with her. And I'm quite sure all of this is going to get approved. So I hope the new business administration is taking an earful. I'm not smiling, and I'm serious, and I want this addressed with respect. Your kids is in this district just like mine was, and I have nieces and nephews in the district now. I'm asking you with respect, these things that I circled during the agenda, Madam Chair, Madam President, I will share with you, okay? So it's about professionalism. I don't care who's not my friend. I want action to be taken, okay? I need this affirmative action to be answered seriously, and I'm wrapping up with that. Every agenda item I mentioned, could you please address my concerns? Thank you.
So, Ms. Waiters, we are not at liberty to discuss ongoings of the HSEA and the --
I gave them my rights notice.
It's, we are the Board of Education. What happened between anyone and the parent union is really up to taking it to that union. I can't, so, Ms. Waiters, you wanted an answer from me, you have to let me finish.
The collective bargaining agreement? The bargaining agreement?
The collective bargaining agreement is an agreement between the Board of Education and the union. It is not an, it is not an agreement between the Board of Education and Pat Waiters, the Board of Education.
I was the union president, that's what I said. It's here, 2022, the Congress.
Yes.
I was the union president, so I do that stuff and do that. I'm not now, but the act is already committed. You get it?
Okay.
I know what you're saying, but I, the act is still in it. All right? I was part of the union.
You were absolutely part of the union. Not gonna, not gonna argue with you on that at all. Now, getting back to the donation from the Hoboken Public Education Foundation. I want to be abundantly clear about what the Hoboken Public Education Foundation is. Up here is the Board of Education. The Hoboken Public Education Foundation is a nonprofit organization. It has 501(c)(3) status, and no one who sits on this board is on the board of the Hoboken Public Education Foundation.
Mr. Del Torre.
No one who is on the Board of Education, Mr. Del Torre included.
None of us serve on the Hoboken Public Education Foundation. We can, after this meeting, we can happily sit down and go to their website. You can pull up who their leadership is. Do many of us attend their events, their fundraisers when they have them? Yes, we absolutely do. What the HPEF does, and I want to make sure that it's clear for you, because I don't often get an opportunity to speak this freely on the matter, is that they fundraise for things that we would not be able to offer our students. So what that looks like, Ms. Waiters, is it looks like taking students who've never been on a college visit and taking them to see colleges, including HBCUs. It looks like making sure that every single student has access to SAT prep courses, which is not something that existed prior. They do incredibly good work that is important, that ensures equity in this district, and frankly, it is an organization that you should be proud of and looking to assist, because they are doing so much good for this community, especially for our underrepresented student population.
Okay, the way you just explained that, with all due respect, if I knew about the organization, which I am going to do my homework, it was told to me, I ran against Mr. Del Torre, three terms, and yourself, okay? And I always stand here and ask you this question, when he spoke last week, when he brought that picture up in here, the money, the way it looks to members of the public, like the money, and it looks like pay to play, like I told you. Any more?
I'm gonna stop you right there, because this is not a back and forth between you and the chair, but that is not what it looks like to anyone, except you standing here and calling it a back, a pay to play.
That's all. But to us too, members of the public, so when we see this kind of --
You are one member of the public, Ms. Waiters. You are standing here speaking on your own behalf.
This is all coming out without communication, but we're serious. This is serious. So thank you for explaining it to me, and for the people that's watching, thanks for explaining it to me, but I don't feel that we need nothing but praise. If my kids have benefited in this district, especially in struggling, of course, I'd be happy to hear that, all right?
Wonderful.
So let's be fine now, because everything in this town, you know, is very carried and fulfilled, and I don't mind saying, thank you. I mean, since I got it on, it's good for my kids, I'm always speaking to them. You don't want me to win.
Ms. Sullivan, do we have anyone else signed up for comments on agenda items?
No.
All righty, we are going to move to our consent agenda.
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Sullivan, can you please call the roll?
Sharon Angley?
Yes.
Malani Katamatory?
Yes.
Sheila Delara?
Yes.
Antonio Grana?
Yes.
Katali Kana?
Yes.
Thomas Clubfeld?
Yes.
Leslie Norwood?
Yes.
Aileen McGurk?
Yes. Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. We will now move to comments on agenda and non-agenda items.
Yeah. I mean, you getting permission? Yes, Patricia Waiters, I'm next. Oh, okay. Patricia Waiters, 15 church towers. I have here with me, and I need to be properly introduced to the business administrator, so I can call her by Mrs., whoever addressed her, but I'm addressed in the whole government body tonight. This is my affirmative action for the record report. 16 pages, and I know, Council, being that I turned it over to the Attorney General, that I can't say but much, okay? But what I am saying, and I'm not, and I just wanted to show that it's signed and sent, what I am saying is I'm asking again for professionalism. I don't want friendship from anyone, especially someone I can't trust. I need this to be entertained and addressed, you, because you work for this body, okay? Mr. Gogliardi, please. And this is dated and timestamped from January 27th day, it was a Monday, at 1:38, and the conversation took place with Attorney General. This is for the new business administrator that conducts the business of the Hoboken Board of Education. Her name is?
Dana Sullivan.
Dana Sullivan? Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. Now, here, my three contracts. If you notice, it's a cut in one of the contracts. Madam Chair, this is for you, and you can address the board in its entirety. All three of these is contracts for me. And I'm doing it in a public portion. This is the letter addressed in the Equal Rights Department. In this contract, you will notice 2021/2022 school year contract for Patricia Waiters, and I clearly signed my signature there on June 14, 2021, at 11 o'clock. A two-year gap is between this, is when the harassment, intimidation, bullying, so on, the list goes on, to remove me with a hit that was put out on me to remove me from my union. Two years later, and this one is for February, contract up to 2025, which was hand-delivered in my office by Lisa Cruz, in my office at 1:30, this look like? And this is the contract for now. So all I want you to do is, what I just displayed on this public portion, Mr. Director Gogliardi, Council, and I have big respect for you, big respect, to just continue with respect to what you're going to get from me tomorrow, from this meeting tonight, to look into this matter, and I want it taken very serious, and please share with the business administration, the business administrator, because I was told that's who conduct the business of the school. She need to be advised of what's going on, because she was not here. Today is my first day seeing her, and I guess she was already appointed to the board back in February.
Well, today was my first day seeing her too, but I'll be happy to receive whatever you send me.
I really appreciate you, you know that. Thank you.
If I may, Madam President, so the other thing I wanted to mention for the benefit of the board and the benefit of the public, lest anyone believe that there's a pending affirmative action complaint that the board or the administration has not addressed. If you look in your policies, there's sort of an internal administrative process for affirmative action complaints, but any citizen, if they wanted to, could bring something to the attention of a court or to the state. And so the reference made to the Attorney General's office is because Ms. Waiters exercised her right to file the matter with the Attorney General's office. To my knowledge, we've not heard anything in the week since it was filed, but once it's in the hands of the Attorney General, there's nothing for the district to do. The complaint was not filed with the district, it was filed with the Attorney General's office. The district received a copy, as it must, and we await further reaction from the state to see what, if anything, the board needs to do. But there's nothing pending before the board now.
Thank you, Ms.
That was perfect.
Thank you.
The Attorney General will only get involved, as I told you, because politically motivated. I just went to Del Torre, and I was going to make sure that it's paid. Thank you.
Understood. Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, Madam President.
Ms. Sullivan, do we have anyone else signed up for?
Yes. Manuel Rivera Solis.
Good evening, Madam President, trustees, members of the public, those here, and those who may be watching at home in future time. My name is Manuel Rivera Soler, Hoboken. You have my address over there, so no need to say it. Just a few questions, as a member of the public. The information that was given from earlier members of the public speaking is greatly appreciated. We might not have all the information or the little details of, as you mentioned, the fund that helps our students. We would all, would be better served if we knew more of it, if we could contribute more, so that more students who are disadvantaged can take at least some, I wouldn't say, I would say, I don't want to say, use the word help, but at least get some advantage of those funds or that organization. It is very important, because in these times, things are going to get worse before they get better, unfortunately, my opinion only. But I would like to ask But I would like to ask a few questions in regards to, first of all, I want to find out if there's anywhere or any place in the district's website where you maintain the public and the parents and guardians of the students in regards to any impossible mitigation of any outbreaks of measles or any other type of contagious disease, or is that only have to go through the city health department? Does the Board inform parents either personally or through the website? Because it's not reaching our shores in a great amount, but anything could happen. So, members of the public, and I'm sure many parents and guardians would appreciate any information that could be given, whether via NICS or any other way that the Board decides to inform the public. Also, I would like to ask, this is going to go into my final part, which is my final part of my question or my statement. I would like to know, facilities were mentioned earlier in the, the agenda, but, well, those, everything mentioned is very important for the district, but my question is, and I've been asking the question for quite some time, even though I was absent, and again, my pardon for my absence, what is or when is the possibility that we could have some type of a timetable as to when this beloved and treasured building is going to be repaired? And when is the scaffolding coming down that's surrounding this, again, prestigious campus? It's very important because it's been quite a long time, and again, it, I know it has to do a lot with the masonry and the historic portion of this building, but it's, it's time. We need to get it fixed and get the scaffolding out. Again, my humble opinion, but I'm sure many other people would like to get rid of that on the building. So, I know, again, it's a matter of time and funds, but it's been a long time. Anyway, that was my pet peeve. But that brings me into some of the questions that you already answered in regards to the budget. Being that you are going to be presenting this budget, I believe you said May 6th, will members of the public in that presentation be able to ask further questions in regards to the different allocations for your funds? Again, vis a vis facilities, as I just mentioned earlier, and as well as other projects in regards to the new facility that we might, or when I say we, I mean the district, might be renting, which will also behoove the facility, the school, I believe, not purchase but rent. So, will that be reflected in the budget? And again, will members of the public be able to get any answers again? Because this is not answer, right now, we're not in answer and question time, but will we be able to pose questions then when you present the final budget? And again, will it be also available on the 30th for the public to read?
You're approaching five minutes.
Thank you. Would you, would it be available again on April 30th for the public to read in their homes? And with that, I yield back if I have time left. Thank you very much for listening.
Actually, I don't, when we advertise the budget on April 30th, does the full bu, the budget goes out at that point in time, or usually in the advertisement?
The, the ad is a full-page ad with all budget information, correct?
So, yeah, the budget itself will be available, probably in rather small print, because it gets printed in a paper, on April 30th, but on May the 6th, there will be a full presentation, there will be the opportunity to ask questions, and the project you referenced where the district is looking to rent space, there is not a signed or approved lease, that would not be in effect until the 2026-2027 school year, so it's a little far off in the future still. You're welcome. We are going to be going into executive session this evening for the purpose of covering matters that are covered by attorney-client privilege. We will not be taking action, so we will just be coming back to close the meeting. We will be approximately 30 minutes. Do I have a motion?
So, motion.
Second.
Ms. Sullivan, could you please call the roll?
Sharon Angley?
Yes.
Malani Katamatory?
Yes.
Sheila Del, Delara?
Yes.
Antonio Grana?
Yes.
Katali Kana?
Yes.
Thomas Klubfeld?
Yes.
Leslie Norwood?
Yes.
Aileen McGurk?
Yes.
It is 9:08, and we are just coming back from executive session. We went out for executive session at 8:17. Do I have a motion to resume the meeting?
Motion. Second.
Ms. Sullivan, can you please call the roll?
Sharon Angley?
Yes.
Malani Katamatory?
Yes.
Sheila Delara?
Yes.
Antonio Grana?
Yes.
Shatali Kana?
Yes.
Thomas Klubfeld?
Yes.
Leslie Norwood?
Yes.
Aileen McGurk?
Yes.
And with no further business, do I have a motion to close the meeting?
Motion. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, and good evening.